Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:30. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We've got, I think, three development items on this afternoon's agenda. I know there are some people who kind of want to get here, who might not be able to get here. I'm going to see if we can accommodate everybody. So, let's now take up item 13A. This is the one-year extension for right-of-way abandonment, AB-10, AB-10-38. You want to take that one, Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Susan Dorpansky, Planning Manager. This is a request from Herman Bauer and Jeannie Bangham to extend, for a one-year extension for the right-of-way abandonment associated with 812 North Division Street and 444 West Washington Street. Mr. Bauer is currently pursuing a multifamily project on this property and would like additional time to get that approved and designed so that he can move forward with improvements required by the abandonment at the same time as the development for that project. So, he's requesting a one-year extension, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody? Go.
Susan, in our packet, the original request for abandonment was signed by three property owners, and then subsequently, one of those property owners asked for his authorization to be annulled. Can you kind of walk through us how that affects the improvements, and does that leave any gaps in the improvements?
Sure. So, this slide that I'm showing on the screen now shows the block that is the subject of the abandonment. You'll see on the lower left, there's a hatched area on APN 0119102. That is Mr. Kirsch's property. He was originally a party to the abandonment and subsequently withdrew being a part of it. So, the remainder are what you see in yellow on the 0119106 and 019105. The very southwest corner was never a party to the abandonment, so we never had a full block to begin with. So, staff felt that it would still be okay to move forward with the abandonment without Mr. Kirsch as well.
So, it doesn't actually leave a gap in the improvements? It just ends on both the, looks like, the west and east sides?
Yes.
At the property lines?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board?
Susan, is there any reason not to approve this extension?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Anybody? Public comment on this issue? I don't see any. This one looks like it's ready for a motion. Go.
I move to approve a request for a one-year extension for AB-10-03A, a right-of-way abandonment for properties located at 444 West Washington Street and 812 North Division Street, APN 001-191-05 and 06.
Motion by Supervisor Zare about seconded by Supervisor McCann on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up item 13B. This is a final subdivision map for Schultz Ranch Phase 1 from Schultz Ranch LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We've had this before us once, now take us up where we are now.
Yes, so this is the long-anticipated first phase of the Schultz Ranch development. This is a final map for 100 lots associated with the Schultz Ranch development. It's located in the south end of town. You can access the property by either Topsie Lane or Bigelow Drive. It's in the vicinity of the old racetrack, which is where the Racetrack Road name comes from. That Racetrack Road name will be perpetuated through the site as well, all the way to Topsie Lane. The final map is for 100 lots of the currently-approved 424 lots for this total project, and the lots are located on either side, the north and south of Racetrack Road, on the western side of the property. The applicant has met all of the tentative map conditions, and staff is recommending approval.
And these lots are 6,000?
Yeah, on average, 6,000.
And so, is it moving down from 400 units to 100 units? Is that what it's doing? Or is it just temporarily doing that?
Yeah, the total number approved for the tentative is 424, but this first phase is just for 100.
100 units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Brad, go.
In the conditions, condition 3B, which is on page four, the Bigelow lift station looks like it is going to not have to be improved for Phase 1. Have we looked at whether the Bigelow lift station has capacity for the 100 lots of Phase 1 and any additional privately-owned lots in the vicinity that might be built during that interim? Because what I don't want to do is get in a situation to where we've given the developer the ability to not make the improvements until Phase 2, and then that may prevent private property owners from building a single house on another lot. So, I just want to make sure that we've looked at that.
Danny Roder, Public Works. Yeah, with the requirement, they submitted an analysis of the lift station. We had previously also looked at the lift station from a regional standpoint, and there's adequate capacity for the 100 lots, the build-out of this subdivision, as well as the build-out of Carson City parcels, as current zoning allows. If, for some reason, we've looked into the future, if that Topsie Lane area were to come into Carson City instead of having its own Douglas County facilities, there would need to be improvements to be made, but that would be another addition to our interlocal agreement with Douglas County. And so, as far as Carson City parcels are concerned, which is all we are looking at currently, there's adequate capacity.
For the entire project or just Phase 1?
The entire project, including any Carson City parcels that will build out in the future.
Thank you. On condition number nine on page six, under the staff response, I believe there's a typo there. Could you just go through that response and clarify what it should say?
Sure, and I apologize for that typo. Number nine, the original condition of approval stated, "A will-serv letter from the Water and Wastewater Utilities shall be provided to the Nevada Health Division prior to approval of a final map." What the response should say is, "Will-serv letters were provided to NDEP as part of the submittals for final map review and approval." So, there is a word or two missing there. The reason for the difference between providing them to NDEP versus providing them to the Health Division is that because since this map was originally approved, the agency that reviews for drinking water is the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water under NDEP, as opposed to the Health Division that used to approve it. So, this is an acceptable answer from staff.
Then on condition 18 on page seven, for onsite bus stops. You and I spoke about this yesterday, but for the record, can you go through the change from the school district on this, and that they're not going to require bus stops?
Right. This item was, the original condition stated, "The applicant will provide onsite bus stops that will be incorporated in the site planning of the proposed project per Carson City School District regulations." The applicant met with the school district and also with transportation to discuss doing a combination stops for Jack, possibly in the future, and the school buses, and the school district was not interested in having these provided at this time. They would rather provide the bus stops and locations at a future time as development moves forward.
And would that be at the school district's cost or the developer's cost?
The school district's cost, I believe, but I don't have a clarification on that.
And then finally, on condition number 20 on page seven, improvement plans for the final-phase map that includes the 251st lot, which has now been changed to, that number has changed now, if I remember right, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's closer to 200.
Okay. Residential lot shall include all remaining improvements for open space parks. At what point in this project, at what phase level, are we going to require bonding for the open space and path improvements, or are we?
Yes, we will, and that will be a part of Phase 3.
Other questions from board? Public, want to weigh in on this issue? I don't see any. Want to make a motion, Brad?
I move to approve a final subdivision map known as Schultz Ranch Phase 1 from Schultz Ranch LLC, resulting in the creation of 100 residential lots on property zone Single Family 6,000, specific plan area located at 7,001 Center Drive, APN 009-311-6567 and 68, which fully complies with all of the conditions of approval as contained in the Schultz Ranch Common Open Space Development Tentative Map staff report and Schultz Ranch Development Agreement pursuant to the requirements of the Carson City Municipal Code.
Motion by Supervisor Mankowski, seconded by Supervisor McKenna on the motion discussion. Question?
Are the changes mentioned material enough? Questions that you had?
And it was only a clarification of the staff response, not in any of the approvals, so.
Okay. We okay on it? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the Schultz Investments LLC. This is the Old Clear Creek Grade Road. We had this before us before, and we asked the applicant to do some analysis with NDOT. It's back here, so we're going to get an update from our planning folks. We have received a letter from Mr., from, yeah, Stan Crapo and James and Sandra Tar and PEG. I don't want to mispronounce the name, K-E-H-R-E-S, okay? My understanding from the letter that you sent, that's a late item here, Susan, is that NDOT said they can't use, they will not allow them to use the road to the northeast or west to get to Old Clear Creek to do development. Is that right?
What they said, according to Manhard, is that in order for them to consider it being used, they would need to construct full-access improvements on Highway 50, which would include acceleration and deceleration lanes to the access point, and then remove them after construction of the subdivision improvements are completed. In addition, NDOT has expressed concern about safety, concerns of traffic entering at that location, so between those two things, Manhard doesn't feel that that is a feasible option, and staff agrees.
Okay, I know you're going to go through this and make, and talk about some changes you made. So, I'm going to let you do that, but as you go through it, I'd like you to address, you know, what the effect of a tentative map is and how that interplays with the final map, who has responsibility for access issues. And what I want you to focus on is this, is that this came out of the Planning Commission, I think unanimous, because there was nobody that spoke against it, I think, is what I see in a minute. What I'm interested in is, one, the changes you made to the conditions for the tentative map, but second, it's pretty clear that, from the letter here anyway, and I don't know the legal of it, but from the letter, that access is, nobody, the homeowners up there will not allow vehicle, that road to be widened up there, the access off Clear Creek Grade, more than what it is right now. That's what they're saying. Is that, am I right so far?
Yeah, I believe that is what they're stating.
Okay, so the question I have, and I know we've addressed this before, is how, what weight does this body give to that in determining whether or not a tentative map should be done or not? In other words, if there's a, if the homeowners who theoretically assume they do own the prop, own the right-of-way, they're not willing to give access on that right-of-way or expand the right-of-way. How does that factor into what we should be considering under our code as we deliberate on this matter? And if we need to go.
Do you want me to answer that first?
Yeah, that's kind of a, I mean, I think that's kind of the core underlying question of what's going on here. I mean, we've heard from everybody about what, you know, we've heard a lot of testimony on it, but I think what's really going on here is that, hey, you're not going to get access no matter what, so go away. I got, you know, I got that. So, the next question is, okay, well, what are you doing? I mean, not the homeowners, but what's the staff doing back here saying, hey, look, they're not going to get access, so come on, what's happening here?
Okay.
And so, I need to have you explain a little bit about what, what impact that has on this potential tentative map issue, because it does seem a little odd. If they're being told up front they can't get access, how do you move forward off that? Go, okay? I didn't mean to prejudge anybody else's questions here. I know that that's in front of everybody here that we.
Sure. Yeah, so, we do look at access to the subdivision as a part of our approval, and we do verify and need to verify that before we recommend approval of a tentative subdivision map that access does exist. And we have determined through the three parcel maps that I'm about to show you, and Danny will explain in conjunction with those maps, that legal access does exist to the property. And in particular, across the two of the three property owners that are parties of that letter, not only does access exist, but public access exists in the width of 60 feet through an easement, not a right-of-way, but an easement.
1583.
Right, so 1583. So, I'm, we're going to go through, and Danny's going to tell me which ones to do first, and then I'm going to let him.
So, as this letter came up, we dug back in even further than we had previously done on our review to really nail this thing down, so that it's clear for everybody. Just a little bit of background. The initial parcel in 1983 was split up into four parcels, A, B, C, and D. Subsequently, parcel D was split into D1, D2, and D3 and D4 in 1988, and this is parcel map number 1583, October of 88. And if you can see there, the alignment on the bottom side of there is Clear, Old Clear Creek Road, and then there's a center line with bearing and distance data and some curve data that goes to the northeast and then makes.
Point on our, I'm missing, I'm missing Old Clear Creek Road.
Come back out a little bit. So, with my arrow here.
That's a good hand, that's okay.
With my arrow here, this hand, this is being Old Clear Creek Road, and this being the shared access, currently the driveway that we've previously shown. This being center line data all along here, up through the property, and this note right here. Well.
Did I go up? Did I go up?
Yeah.
Don't double tap.
Yeah, just click and grab. There you go.
This note right here, 60-foot-wide public utility access and drainage easement. So, this is the location that was granted from Old Clear Creek Road across parcel D2 and D1, over onto what we'll call parcel C of the.
And for the record, those two parcels that you're looking at are Peg Karis's parcel and James Tar's parcel.
The two parcels are, where are they now? Which ones? That one?
This is.
That's D1.
This is Tar, and this is Karis.
And what you're saying is, this map, this is a recorded document, has a 60-foot-wide public utility access and drainage easement on that?
Yes.
Correct.
This is the recorded parcel map.
But only within those two properties?
Right, but we're going to show you the maps with the remainder easements as well.
So, I'm just tracing from Old Clear Creek Road up. This is the first two parcels, and specifically related to the letter that was written. Two out of the three on there.
Just for clarification, it reads, "60-foot-wide public utility," period, "access," period, "and drainage easement."
60-foot-wide public.
It's not, it's not a 60-foot-wide public utility access easement.
It's a 60-foot-wide public utility, comma, "access and drainage easement." So, that goes from Old Clear Creek Road across D2 and D1 onto what was originally C, parcel C. So, Susan, if you can, C would be to the west there. It shows Beck there on that map.
21.
So, then this was a parcel map of C, the original parcel being that whole entire box, but C split it into four. This is parcel map 1740, recorded in November of 89. 1C being the north parcel, 2C, 3C, and 4C being along the bottom. And this, originally there was, zoom out a little bit more.
Okay.
Right in there, right there.
Danny, do you have a laser pointer or anything like that? Anybody got anything?
Yeah, this is a pointer.
Jennifer, everything.
Yeah. Yeah, we can point, but.
Point on the computer or whatever, I'm just.
Yeah, the people on the, on television won't be able to see what we're pointing to.
Okay.
Okay.
Use that, okay.
All right, so, wrong mic. Here we go. The original parcel C had easement, a 50-foot easement shown along the east and the north of the parcel, which is hard to actually get a road to go perfectly along the edge of the parcel. So, when this parcel was created, it created parcel 1C, 2C, 3C, and 4C. It granted, zoom in again, in there on 1C. Right there. So, it showed the existing 50-foot-wide roadway and utility easement to be abandoned, which was along the eastern and northern edge of parcel C as a whole. Then when it split 1C, 2C, 3C, 4C, it granted a 60-foot-wide private access and drainage easement for the benefit of parcels A, C, and D, as shown on the original four parcel map, along with the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 35, which is further up. It also granted this 60-foot-wide private access and public utility easement for 1C, 2C, 3C, and 4C along this alignment. So, when we're tracing, this being what we looked at before, parcel D1 of the other map, there is then following the general alignment of the shared driveway, continuing 60 feet of private access and drainage for the benefit of A, C, and D, this entire thing being C, A being the further succession parcel, D being the previous parcel that was split into four. So, along this existing driveway, there is a 60-foot-wide private access for the benefit of A, C, and D, which is, this is C. So, then from there, go to.
Who's the easement granted to? This is the county or?
It's an easement for the benefit of the parcel owners.
Sorry, that's.
Those parcels, as stated in that map. So, C, that easement is for all the parcel owners of C, which is 1C, 2C, 3C, 4C. Subsequently, parcel 1C was split again into a north and south.
When you say secretly.
Subsequently.
Subsequent, not.
Subsequently.
Not subsecretly, but subsequent.
Subsequently.
I got you. You were secretly, sub-secret, that's all right.
So, 1847, parcel map 1847 was recorded in December of 1990, and it split parcel 1C, and this is where it gets a little confusing because of all the notations, but I'm going to try and keep it clear here. Parcel A of parcel 1C from the previous map being the northern parcel. This map split it into the north and south and further perpetuated the 60-foot access and utility easement per parcel map 1740. So, that was continued, and then there was also a new 60-foot private access and drainage easement from parcel B of previous 1C to parcel A of previous 1C. So, now we've got two parcels created from before. Then beyond there, parcel A of 1C granted access and public utility easement to the Schultz Investments property in December of 2012, with the recorded document number 429473. Do you have that one?
Did you?
It should be in it. It should have been.
Danny, did you say public or private?
I believe it just says access and public utility easement.
Let me get the picture.
So, this would then be the parcel A of 1C granting a 60-foot-wide access and drainage easement, access and public utility easement from A of 1C to the Schultz Investments property. Now, since it doesn't say public, it would be deemed here that this would be from parcel A of 1C to the Schultz Investments property, as it currently is today. Once it gets divided, those are all included in that parcel, just like the others are, where access was granted to C, and parcel 1C, 2C, 3C, 4C were then granted access as well. So, that's tracing from Old Clear Creek Road up. Originally, there was four parcels, now there's 12 or more, and granting various accesses. So, I hope, I can answer more questions, I've got more older documents too, but I think that's the clearest picture from Old Clear Creek Road up.
So, the current, on-the-ground access is 20 feet? Is that what it is, a little, maybe less? Is that what it is?
In some spaces, it's a little bit wider, or a little bit narrower, but the minimum we noted was 11 to 12 feet.
And what you're saying is from Clear Creek, access off Clear Creek Road to this potential development here on the tentative map, there's a 60-foot-wide easement. Either it's a public access or an easement.
Correct.
60 feet.
60 feet wide. Now, it probably doesn't follow exactly the center line all the way up of that 12 feet, but there's 60 feet in there that it can move around and be adjusted within that 60 feet, if that answers your question.
Yeah. Fascinating history here, all right.
If it's access, where does the presumption come from that it's paved or should be paved? If it's just access, that's what this says?
That comes in our development standards. When we have a tentative subdivision map and a road is going to get to that point, the primary access being either a private or public road, and those development standards dictate how that road is constructed, whether it be private or public. So, what's happened up here is because there have been parcel maps and single-family home after single-family home, the extended driveway standards have been taken from the bottom to the top, as opposed to a private road access to more than four parcels from the bottom to the, to the site.
So, when you, when you're granted the access and drainage, and when we go to develop it, it is policy, if that's the right word, or standards within the. it is policy, if that's the right word, or standards within the building department to have it as a paved road? Is that somewhat right?
It's actually in municipal code under the development standards.
So let me make sure we're all on the same page and I understand this. There was a plot of land owned by a person. That person wanted to divide that land up, and so they did. And when they divided it up, they provided access to all, they provided access to areas on that particular piece of land that they divided up. So the owner did this and said, "The northwest corner will have access this way," with this easement.
So as each of these parcel maps were recorded, it was a requirement to continue having access along there and provide access through each of the parcels.
So as far as your study is concerned, as far as the city's concerned, there is legal access to each of these parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
Danny, are you done, John?
I'm done.
Okay. Danny, can you pull up the first map, which I believe was 1583? Or Susan? And can you show us again parcels A, B, C, and D?
This was just D1, D2, D3, and D4. We should have, do we have 1018? I don't have 1018 that provided A, B, C, and D, but we do have another exhibit that I can reference that. I have a hard copy, but we also have a-
What I'm trying to zero in on is on parcel C, the access is for the benefit of parcels A, B, and D, so I'm just trying to get an idea where parcels A, B, and D are.
We have another exhibit that kind of shows all the parcels as is, and I can point out which ones are which. So these are the parcels that exist today. And the original included A, which is A1, A2, A3, and A4. B, which was these parcels over here, which subsequently, subsequently had access here, so they then weren't included down the line. So these parcels over here were originally B and have been split up since, but it has its own access. So A would be these five, or four, sorry. C would be these five. D would be these four.
Okay, so then going back to map 1740, the second map, where the access across C on the top two parcels, I believe the note said that it was access for the benefit of parcels A, B, and D. Is that correct?
A, C, and D.
A, C, and D. Okay.
Go back, I mean, while you're at it, now flip back to the other map you had up there.
So then in this map, parcel A of 1C provided access off of their access to Schultz Investments parcel.
Okay.
So I understand that, but where I'm getting hung up is that across parcel 1C, A, and B, that's a private access easement for the benefit of parcels A, C, and D. How do you get from parcel D up to the access easement from 1CA to Schultz?
Are you asking about the document that provided from 1CA to Schultz?
Yes. On the first map, it shows a public access easement. On the second map, it showed a private access easement for the benefit of A, C, and D. And then from 1CA, it shows an access easement from 1CA to the Schultz property. Well, my question is, from the property line of the D parcels to the access easement from 1CA to the Schultz parcel, that appears to be a private access?
It is a private access for parcel C, and parcel A of 1C has access to provide to there and then can provide access beyond there.
Okay. Thank you.
Getting more confusing.
One more comment.
Okay.
On 1740, let me go back to that. Earlier, I'd kind of passed this over, but I spaced this one. On this note right here, zoom in on that note, the 60-foot-wide, on 1C, the 60-foot-wide private access and drainage easement for the benefit of parcels A, C, and D, as shown on record plat number 1018, and for the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 35. That is the Schultz Investments piece.
Okay. Then my final question is, in the letter that we received from the homeowners, it referenced that the public access easement, or the access easement, 60-foot access easement, is not the shortest route from Clear Creek Road to the Schultz property? Has the applicant looked at any measures that they might need to prevent residents or visitors going to the parcels that are parceled out of the Schultz property from using the correct access to the property, which is the public access easement, rather than taking one of the other private drives, that it might be a shorter distance? Has that been addressed at all?
I'll let the applicant answer that one.
I don't quite, Chris Baker for the record, Manhart Consulting. I don't quite know that I understand the question.
Chris, in the letter, and I don't know if this is true or not, but in the letter from the homeowners, it says that the shortest distance from Clear Creek Road to the Schultz Ranch is not the private drives that we're looking at that follow, fall within the access easements. So that was referenced in the letter. I don't know if that's accurate or not. My question is, if there is a shorter route from Clear Creek Road to the Schultz property, what measures are going to be taken to direct the homeowners and their visitors and the Schultz properties to be created from using the correct route, which would involve the roads that they would be a party to the maintenance agreement for, as opposed to taking a shorter route if it exists? Is that clear?
Okay. Well, there's no other legal access, and there's not any other paved access. So to get there, I guess in a shorter route, you'd actually have to cut through someone's existing property.
So there's no paved private access that is shorter from Clear Creek Road to the Schultz property than the one that is proposed within the public access easement?
Not that I'm aware of it, unless there's something on somebody else's private property, and it would be, you know, a personal driveway, and it would have to go through a rear yard, as I would understand it. So I don't, I mean, looking at the aerial, there's no, there's no other paved route to get there.
I think I can also add to that. Based on my conversations with Peg Charis, who has the house in this location here, and the access point from Old Clear Creek Road goes through her property and then turns. She has a driveway here, and then beyond that, there is a gravel road on her property that accesses, I believe, a drainage basin that's also on her property. And she had expressed to me that at some point in the past, Mr. Schultz had approached her to get an easement through her property in this location, but she did not grant that to him. So that could be where that comment's coming from, just based on the conversations I've had with the surrounding property owners.
So the private property owner could block that access to prevent, through traffic?
Yes, and I believe she also told me that she does have some kind of a chain or a rope across that to prevent people from accessing the property behind. But I see her in the audience. She could probably confirm that for you during public comment.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the other picture with the blue and red lines for a simple? Okay. On that particular picture, the blue line represents the easements that you've been talking about. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that is the access that will be granted to the Schultz property? And that's the easements that were granted with the deeds, as you just described, A1, A2, and all those other properties, correct?
Correct.
So this is the legal access granted by the property owners passing down and so forth?
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay. So off of that, all we're doing is using that new easement, or the blue line, to get access to the Schultz Investment property. After that, they have to get, then they will create their own roadway when they're on there. So this goes, goes back to all the other property owners relinquishing their rights and granting their rights to access. Is that correct? Is that the best way of saying that?
Correct. When they created the parcel maps and recorded that easement, public utility or private access, public or private access, they granted that on there.
And the blue line is not on anybody's personal property. It is on the easements. Is that correct?
The easement is on top of the property, instead of a right-of-way, where nobody owns the right-of-way except for the city. This, the property owner owns the underlying land, but there's an easement over the top of it.
I think that's what's confusing. So a property owner has it, but they have to relinquish their rights to the property based upon the easements right. Is that basically right?
Correct.
And that property would, that property owner would have known that when they bought, or they should have been notified when they bought their property, that that easement is there in the property search and the title report?
Theoretically, yes.
Thank you.
Can I, Danny, just to confirm one more time. So legally, they have to give permission in order for this property to have, in order for this access to occur to get to the Schultz Ranch development?
It's already been given.
It's been given. So that's, that's what, that has happened already, so we're good as far as that goes. Can I ask one other question?
Correct to your first one, and yes, second question.
Okay. My second question addresses one other comment in this letter, and that was, "Finding any septic systems being installed on the property because of the health risk and potential pollution of well-drinking water." Can you speak to that issue?
For one, I believe our conditions of approval have, show that the septics and wells have to be shown in order to provide proper setbacks from such. And in all likelihood, the closest septic system to an individual property homeowner's well is generally their own septic, for food for thought.
Danny, do you have the legal description for the Schultz property? I mean, can you show us that that is the southwest quarter of the, I don't remember the description because the map isn't up, but if we could just show that the legal description matches the easement description?
Just one minute. I don't have the actual, I only have a hard copy, but I can describe it here if that works for you.
If you have the hard copy and it has the note on it, then you can read the note into the record, and that would suffice.
Just a second. So on this map that we're looking at, what created parcel A, B, C, and D was map number 1018, recorded November 17, 1983. When you look at this, what I'm tracing over right now, actually, let me start here. This, right where I'm pointing at right now, is depicted on map 1018 as the southwest edge of Section 35. When you trace from here, along here to here, and along here, and along here, this is the southwest quarter of Section 35. The Schultz property is here, being the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 35, which is noted on 1740 as being the beneficiary of the private access easement. The subsequent, recorded document by parcel A of 1C merely realigned that, basically, provided a T off of that.
We're going to show you the APN map that shows Section 35 and where this parcel is.
Okay, great. I just want to get all this on the record so that it's beyond a shadow of a doubt that the Schultz property has the right to use that access easement.
And what I just showed, supervisor Wankowski, in the packet we have is on page 70. It's a legal description prepared by Resource Concepts. Is that, that's a legal for, is that the legal for the Schultz? Page 70.
So on this map here in front of, oh, okay. Yes? Yes.
Yes, that is a legal-
Yes, that is the legal description for the parcel.
Yeah. So right at the top of page 70, a parcel of land located within the northeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter of Section 35, township 15 North Rings, 19 East, which is the same as 1740 recorded map.
And then if you look at the APN map that's on the screen now, you can see Lee is highlighting Section 35, and then you can see parcel 72, which is the Schultz Investments parcel, where his arrow is right now. Good? Okay.
Okay. What other changes did you have to the, just go and talk about the changes you had to the conditions as a result of us asking the applicant to talk to M.D.
Okay.
It's on your memorandum of August 7.
All right. So I, so first, if I could just state the other added conditions based on our previous meeting, if that would be all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the memo provided to the board dated July 28, I had outlined some revised conditions that included a modification to Section 22, or I'm sorry, to Condition 22, stating that Old Clear, the access road may be widened to a minimum surface width of 20 feet- Old Clear, the access road may be widened to minimum surface width of 20 feet if deemed necessary by engineering or the fire department for public safety reasons, and I'll, I'll get to that one in a minute. But then I also added, based on our conversation at the last meeting, "The developer shall be responsible to repair any off-site damage to the access road between the subject property and Old Clear Creek Road that is caused as a result of the construction of subdivision infrastructure improvements associated with the project. The developer shall submit photographic and written documentation of the access road condition before and after the construction of infrastructure improvements to substantiate any damage that may be caused during the construction process." That was one added condition. The next added condition, "The developer shall in good faith make his or her best effort to join the existing maintenance agreement for the access road between the subject property and Old Clear Creek Road." And then finally, "If approved by NDOT, the developer shall use the emergency access road directly off of US Highway 50 for all construction traffic related to the construction of subdivision infrastructure improvements." So I'll address the, and as late information, I provided the board, and then there are copies in the back as well for the public, for anyone that would like them. I provided a memo dated today that requests changes to the conditions again. The first one being a modification back on number 22 to the original condition of approval that stated that the access road from Old Clear Creek Road to the subject property shall be widened to a minimum surface width of 20 feet. And that's as opposed to the revised condition that said it may be widened if deemed necessary. That modification or reversion back to the original condition is because of a conversation that staff had with the fire department, and the fire department indicated that they do require the road to be widened to 20 feet for public safety purposes. So we're requesting the original condition remain, and the fire department is here to speak on that if you would like to ask them questions as well. And then based on a memo I received from Manhard Consulting yesterday.
Can I ask you a question first?
Sure.
Before we jump to another one. On that access road, it is basically, going back to that blue line, that is a paved road there that is there now, correct? That is, and that's what, this item number 22 is saying, or suggesting, we should widen to 20 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, we are recommending that you require it.
Okay.
In the blue line.
And that's due to the, the fire department's recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The other modification, modification to the conditions is to delete proposed condition number 56 related to the use of the emergency access road for construction based on the information provided by Manhard in their memo yesterday, which is also attached to the late information memo provided to you that states that the access is not feasible for temporary construction purposes. So staff is recommending those changes as well. That concludes essentially my presentation. So I can answer any other questions, and Manhard can answer any questions as well.
There'll be some come up here, I think. We'll see. Brad.
Stacy, if you could come up, please. Can you give us the, the thought process behind the requirement to widen the road to 20 feet? Because the testimony that we heard previously is that topographically, that may not be possible up there, and there was a suggestion to provide paved turnouts rather than widening the entire road.
Sure.
So can you walk us through all that?
The, the condition that we put on there for a 20-foot width is basically a requirement not only in our code, but more importantly, in state administrative code. It's an adopted regulation by a fire marshal, the state fire marshal who's adopted the 2009 Wildland Urban Interface Code. There are two descriptors for access. One is a driveway, which can serve five parcels. Might be six. I think it's five. The other is a fire access road, which serves more than a driveway. In this case, that's what's applicable. The fire access road has to be a minimum of 20-foot width under state NAC and under our municipal ordinance. Even if you wanted to amend our adopted ordinance and require less than that, we wouldn't be able to do that because state administrative code sets the minimum. We couldn't go below the state minimum. So that's the reason behind the 20-foot requirement. Which, by the way, the developer doesn't have an issue with. They've agreed to that component of it.
No, again, what I'm going back to is topographical issues.
I didn't, I didn't look at topographical issues. There really are no, that's one of the sections of the code where they don't necessarily allow modification. It's pretty straightforward. It says it has to be 20-foot access easement. Back to easement, it's not access easement. 20-foot access road, fire access road. It doesn't really give an alternative. I could, I could ask the state fire marshal if he's dealt with alternatives relative to that. It's a relatively new adoption of the code. It was adopted in 2010, if memory serves me. So I don't know that they've run into many instances where they couldn't do 20 feet. I would have to ask the state fire marshal if he's run into any of those, any of those instances, and what alternatives he has offered.
If you could do that, I'd be interested to see, because I guess what I'm thinking is that can the CCMC supersede, because of the hillside ordinance, supersede a state requirement, which takes precedent, the local municipal code or the state requirement?
The more restrictive would, would take precedent. We can be more restrictive than state code. We can't be less restrictive than state code.
But in this case, the more restrictive is.
Is the state code.
Okay.
Right?
Well, what I'm saying is, if the hillside ordinance prevents us from putting a 20-foot wide access road in there, that would be more restrictive.
Right. Does the hillside ordinance prevent a 20-foot access?
No, I don't think it does. It states you can go up to steeper grades and, to limit cuts and those sort of things, but I think the, the minimum is still 20 at that point.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking of, is how does that affect the, the hillside and the grading, the cut into and the retaining walls? Can you physically get a 20-foot road in there if it exceeds the, is it 12% for drives?
It can go up to 14, I think, for certain periods.
And I can tell you that on our side, to accommodate widths in hill areas, we have gone up to 15% on slope. So we, we have accommodated slope because the, we have accommodated slope, but not width.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy, Chris, I'm not sure who can answer this, but with the, with the requirement of widening the road, the current owners are maintaining the road. So how is that defined such that this additional road width is required for this development? And after the developer is gone and there's residents in there, how is that defined in terms of maintenance on the road going forward?
From our perspective, we don't, I mean, we don't deal with maintenance agreements. The, the fire code doesn't deal with maintenance agreements. So our condition goes on the developer that says, "In order for you to get this approved, here are the conditions you have to comply with." Then it becomes incumbent upon the developer to do whatever they need to do legally within the confines of whatever parties are involved to make that happen. So that is, that wouldn't be a requirement of us.
So, Chris, the ball's in your court.
Again, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. I think the condition of approval that the city, that Carson City has placed, Condition 55, again, that, you were provided with a copy of that letter. In that included the maintenance agreement for the road. We did a breakdown of the parcels who were actually included in that maintenance agreement, and actually, all the parcels that are accessed off that road are not included in the agreement. As I understand it, everyone has been paying kind of informally into the maintenance fund, even though they aren't part of it. And again, for the maintenance fund, this is really just to maintain the road, snow removal, any patchwork, anything, maybe a slurry or a chip seal, you know, every couple of years. So essentially, the, the parties that are not officially or legally in the agreement are in the exact same situation as the Schultz Investments property. Unlike those, we have a condition placed on us, and, and I said publicly, you know, for the record at the last meeting, that we'd love to get into it. I think it's fair. I think it makes sense. If we're going to utilize the road, we should pay our fair share, and we still stick by that.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Stacy, I was just going to clarify. I'm sorry to make you get up again. The road itself is a width of 14 to 16 feet now. Your recommendation, it's really not a recommendation.
It's 11 to 14 feet.
14, I'm sorry. It's per the state code that you're going, it's not a recommendation, is it? Or is it, what's the difference? I'm getting confused. Is it your recommendation, fire department, or is it by state or by city?
It's not a recommendation. It's both a state law and a local ordinance.
Okay. So that's, that's why we're going to that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm, we're calling the state fire marshal's office right now to try and find out if they've dealt with this anywhere and have done any alternatives. So hopefully, before we finish here, I'll have an answer for you.
And one more thing, Stacy, I'm sorry. The road that's there now presently was put in prior to 2010. Is that correct?
Correct. Prior to the adoption of that, it, yes.
Okay.
Fascinating issue. I know there are a bunch, there are a number of homeowners out there. You want to go? Go. I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, on item, I don't know what page that is, page 6 of 7, item 54, is that in or out?
54 is in.
I'm sorry?
54 is in.
In. So has, Chris, could, could you weigh in on number 54?
Again, Chris Baker, for the record. Yeah, we've, we put on the record at the last meeting that we were okay. Again, that is strictly for the blue portion. We were going to go out, I even suggested to take a photographic inventory to protect all parties involved, you know, do that, and if there is any, you know, any maintenance problems caused by construction traffic, you know, we'll go ahead and fix that.
Thank you.
I want to ask one more time. On 55, it says, "The developer shall in good faith," but when the developer's gone and the homeowners are in place there, how are, how is that going to be, what kind of restrictions are going to be put on them such that they do participate in this road maintenance agreement, just as the present homeowners have a drafted agreement in terms of maintenance? Any thought process on that?
From my perspective, reviewing the maintenance agreement that's in place now, due to the fact that it does not include all parties, and is an old agreement, and there's really no binding, there's no one that says, you know, X amount of properties need to pay X amount, and it needs to be done, you know, yearly, quarterly, et cetera, you know, I would suggest a new maintenance agreement, including all of the properties that use the blue portion of the road. You know, again, we can only request that. Since we're not party to the agreement, we can't mandate that, but that would be a recommendation that I would be okay with.
I would suggest if a new maintenance agreement is drafted, that it also include the powers to assess and lean?
No.
Chief, what'd you find out?
So we spoke to the state fire marshal, and he said, since the adoption of the code, they haven't had any, any requests to, or instances where they've had to deviate from that 20-foot width. He said that his approach would be to look at the site on a case-by-case basis, make a determination if additional hardening of the property could be done. In other words, sprinklers where they wouldn't normally be required, for instance, turnarounds or pullouts, just short of the narrowing component, for instance, might be ways to get around that. But generally, he would require 20 feet where 20 feet would exist, or where 20 feet were possible, and where it weren't, he would consider alternatives as proposed by a developer.
So that would require a change of the language of the condition? That wasn't for you, Stacy. That was.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to just, Stacy, if you could just look at this condition for me here. And let me know what you think of that language.
The "may" or the "shall"?
The "may."
The reason, I, this would be okay. The reason I, I wanted it changed from "may" back to "shall" is because we really don't have, in order to comply with NAC, I didn't want it to come into this room and have people think that we weren't going to require 20 feet because we had to require it. And the "may" implied to me that, well, maybe after we look at it, we're not going to require 20 feet. And so, you know, with, with what I just heard from the state fire marshal, and with what I'm telling you now, I would be comfortable with the "may" language with the understanding that to everyone involved, that it's going to be 20 feet unless there's some engineering reason why it can't be made to be 20 feet. And, and I think, you know, I, I don't know from, whether Manhard believes that they can do it within 20 feet or not. So I would be comfortable going back to "may" with the understanding from everyone that's here, that it's going to be 20 feet unless we, meaning the state fire marshal and us, can agree to an alternative to that 20-foot width.
So would it be fair to say per site assessment and topographical conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
You can even say, I think you could even say "shall," contingent upon, you know, site assessment and topographical conditions. I think you could use either one.
Let me ask a question of our staff here. I don't want to catch you. Sometimes these legal descriptions get a little bit tricky, but attached, do you have a copy of the road maintenance agreement that the homeowners attached?
Yes, we do.
There's a, there, it says, under property description, it says, "And parcel C of parcel map number 1018 for Clear Creek Partnership filed in the opposite Yum-Tum, together with an easement for ingress and egress across parcel D as shown in said map and reserving from parcel C," it says "and," I think it's supposed to be say "and," "easement for ingress, egress pertinent to parcel A." You with me there?
Yes, I'm with you.
Well, I guess my question is, it seems like that description, only, it references eight lots because there was another C that was split and things like that, but it seems that that description would, would encompass parcels A and the undeveloped parcel that we're looking at here today, because it has an ingress and egress pertinent to parcel A. I mean, parcel A a bunch, I don't, I don't know, but.
As far as I read it, this is saying that C and D are in the agreement, and the ingress and easement to parcel A, but not including parcel A. So what, how I see this is that parcel C and D, and any of the, at the time, eight, now nine, are in this maintenance agreement for the blue portion. Saying that there is the access to parcel A, but not specifically saying that parcel A is included in there. It's saying that the easement for ingress and egress pertinent to parcel A is in there. I'm no lawyer, but.
Well, I guess what it's, what it's, what I'm, I'm not trying, you know, I, what that essentially says in a, in a sense is that this road maintenance agreement assumes that, in back then, when they put this together, that that blue line was the access, access road, easement for ingress and egress. That was it.
Yeah.
I think it acknowledges the existing, the existence of the easement across the parcels.
Correct.
You said it better than I did. Okay. Homeowners, I know there's, sometimes a little difficult to follow, but anybody want to weigh in out here on what we've been saying? Anybody? Come on up if you need to. Come on up. And kind of stick to the, the access issue if you could. Anything you want, but try and address the access, at least for me, the access issue.
I'm Sandra Tar.
Hi.
I wonder if you could put up the I wonder if you could put up the map that had, was the picture, the aerial view? Okay. You see on the right side of that picture, there's another shared driveway that goes right to Mr. Schultz's property. It's a much more direct route going right up through there. I spoke to Bob Fredlin, who owns the house that's on, the first house on the right of that shared driveway, and he said no one had ever approached them for access to Mr. Schultz's parcel. They are also in that, those homes in that, in that area is not part of the parcels that our house is in, and they are all on city sewer. Because the, of the proximity, they couldn't have, they have wells, but they couldn't have septic systems. And because of the elevation is what makes the septic system apparently a problem. But no one has ever investigated that. It's a shorter route. There would be less disruption. And the other question, or not question, but the other thought that I have is if, if it's so important to have that shared driveway that crosses our property be widened to twenty feet, is that also going to apply to the main Clear Creek Road? Because when we were evacuated out of there during the fire, the fire trucks had to pull over into the ditch so that we could get by to leave. So the main road, Clear Creek, is in much worse repair than our shared driveway. So how is that going to, that, our access through our shared driveway has to come through the main road on Old Clear Creek. So how is that any different from the access through our driveway? It's going to deteriorate the road more, and there are areas of that road that I doubt are twenty feet either. And the landslides that go down there every time it rains, I just, I'm wondering, how is that going to factor into the access to Mr. Schultz's property? So I think that there's more than one way to get in there. I just wondered if the other, through Bob Fredlin's development, had been looked at. And one other thing that I would like to say, we contacted a realtor, we had a desktop appraisal done of our property, and we found out that the consequence of the increased traffic, the increased noise, and this road going through our property that has up to this point been a shared driveway will decrease our property value by half. So I find it extraordinarily upsetting that, that those things aren't being taken into consideration. That the Manhard consultants, first of all, said there was no road maintenance agreement. They also said that there had never been any work done on that property, and we know that construction vehicles were in there this last spring. We've lived in that house for ten years. Seven of those years, somebody has been constructing something, and it's almost become intolerable. When they had the grading machine, you could, in our other garage, what I used for a studio, you could feel the vibration in the ground clear down there on the other side of the shared driveway. And where they were doing the grading was up behind the Easby's property. So the idea of six more properties going in there, so there's at least a dozen more vehicles going up and down that road, you're going to widen it. So people are not going to go at a considered rate. They're going to be driving like it's a road. And the traffic noise now, just from the trash truck, from the UPS truck going up and down there, there's no way to get away from it inside of our house. We bought that property. We knew there was an easement across the property. We knew that it was for public utilities and for drainage and for access to these other parcels. We didn't know that there was going to be added six more parcels that were going to go there. Because we are not mind readers, and my husband and I have a great deal of our retirement tied up into this property. So we are going to really be left high and dry. And it's, it's a very upsetting position to be in.
I have a quick question for you. You mentioned that you spoke to a realtor, and then you said you had an appraisal done.
A desktop appraisal.
By an appraiser?
Yes. By the appraisal that, the appraiser that appraised the property in 2009 when we had a refinance done.
So it's two separate opinions?
Where the property value in 2009 was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and now it's five hundred thousand.
So I just wanted to clarify, you had two separate opinions, an opinion from a realtor and then an appraisal.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sandra, question. And does Bob Fredlin own all the property that the direct route would, would affect?
No, he, he had that, that parcel is separate from ours, and it was divided. I believe that he developed part of it himself, but there's Fredlin's, there's Ristin's, there's Lynch, and then the Farr property, I'm not sure who owns that currently. So I don't know is the answer.
So, I mean, basically, is it a gravel drive? Is it a driveway?
No, it's that paved, that asphalt, right on the, on the right-hand side toward the bottom, where that group of houses is there, that asphalt road that goes up there is shared by all of those houses in that, in that parcel.
Are there homes on parcel A right now?
Yes, there are homes on parcel A.
Granelli's, Wheeler's, and...
Were they there when you moved in?
Yes. And there's, at the, and past Wheeler's, there's like a turnout, and I can't think of their last name. Gigi and Kotay. The only house that wasn't there at the time we bought the property is the Schnee-Wise house that's, that's, when you go up the driveway, there's that cut, the, where it branches off to the left, there were only three houses there, and now, now there's a, now there's another house off of that driveway, the Schnee-Wise. And that's part of the construction that I was talking about.
Okay.
And with six parcels and all being developed by the people who, who purchased them, there's going to be a decade of construction going on there. It's not going to be, it's not going to be like a year. It's going to be endless. I feel, it seems like there'll be, no, there, it's, it's infinite. It's not finite.
Help me understand this. The other side of that coin is, if you follow that argument to its logical extent, is that that easement does not exist for the benefit of the Schultz property then?
That...
That's what you're saying?
That's what we understood when we moved in there, that...
That's where we're having a difficulty here, because what we're finding here is that it actually does, that that, that there's a easement...
On the plat map that I, I went and got to the recorder's office and got the plat maps, and I sincerely regret not bringing my book with me, but I did not see that, that of Schultz. But if there was access to his property, it still doesn't say he's going to divide it into six different properties up there. I mean, access to his property and adding six more houses is, seems like two different things.
Yeah, but I understand that. And listen, I'm not, I'm just trying to get in my own mind, because it doesn't say how many parcels, I mean, the easement exists for parcel A as well. It doesn't say how many homes can be built there either.
Well, there can only be one living, one dwelling unit for each five-acre parcel, and all of the homes that were, are on parcel A right now were there when we bought our property. And every, and on parcel C, all the homes were there except for one, which was the Schnee-Wise. There's another empty lot owned by someone up at, up at the lake that hasn't been developed that's in parcel C.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Somebody else? Come on up. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Dean Anderson. I did the original two parcels on the bottom. Ron Waddell did the third one up at the top. I'd like to know what the date on the map that you have is that says the one quarter,
Parcel map seventeen forty was recorded November thirtieth, nineteen eighty-nine. File number nine-three-four-seven-two.
Because when we did it, I went to the Schultz family and contacted them and met up there with them and asked them to go in and co-op on putting a road up. And the fire department said it would have to be wider for more homes up there. So, excuse me, I went with them and asked them to go in with us, and they said, "No, we'll go on it whenever we want." I said, "Okay." So when we were doing the map, I told them to make sure that there was no access whatsoever to the Schultz property, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't co-op with us. So I'm just kind of wondering how that got on there, and that's why I wanted to know the date on the map.
Okay.
Because we were supposed to have the wording to the point where it was a private access for the, I think it's parcel A up there, those A one, two, three, and four,
The original, so there's one more map that didn't apply because it had been subsequently revised.
Subsequently? You're having...
Subsequently.
Okay, got it.
Was twelve eighty-six, recorded in July of nineteen eighty-six, which was D one, the original D one, D two, D three, and D four, provided a sixty-foot-wide public utility access and drainage easement that was not along the alignment of the existing road. Beyond then, the parcel map fifteen eighty-three created, revised that alignment, and called it a public utility access and drainage easement. That was fifteen eighty-three. And then seventeen forty was a parcel map for Nancy Hornbeck, recorded November nineteen eighty-nine, which has the language.
So it is on that one?
Seventeen forty for Nancy Hornbeck in nineteen eighty-nine is the one with the language stating A, C, and D as shown on record plat ten eighteen, and for the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section thirty-five.
Okay. And just, you have checked that that northeast quarter, and that is Schultz's property?
Correct. As we looked up in the assessor's book and in this as well.
Because Nancy Hornbeck's my mother, and when we did that, something slipped by then, because we tried to make sure that there was no access simply to make the lots. Like the lady said, the lots were worth more, and we tried to keep it a little private on the road because we didn't want all the people on the road and stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
That was my question, is the dates on the map. Thank you.
Steve Granelli, forty-six eighty Clear Creek Road. I don't know the difference between tomatoes and tomatoes either, and...
That's the difference between subsequently and subsequently.
Yeah, so a couple of things. There are many issues, issues here that's getting more and more complicated.
Actually, I think getting a little bit more simplified.
Okay, well, can I, I'd like to ask the fire marshal, you know, I don't, if, if the law is written, and now the planning commission wants to say that the road has to be twenty feet, that's what they're recommending, the state law says it should be twenty feet, and now we're trying to find wiggle room for it not to be twenty feet? And no one, no one, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. That's okay. And, go ahead.
No, we're not trying, I don't think, the idea of trying to find a wiggle room is gone. I mean, because there's a sixty-foot easement that's going across there. So what they're saying is, he's comfortable, he was going to say, "Mandate, make it mandatory," but he's okay with may, but he's saying, at the end of the day, guys, you can say "may" all you want, but we're going to require twenty.
That's, Mr. Mayor, that's not, that's not what I heard. I heard that it could be something other than twenty if there could be turnouts and retaining walls and this and that.
The chief's there. That's what I heard. So he's standing right behind you, Steve. He'll get up here.
I'm sorry. Could you clarify that for me? Sure. So the, it, this is where the fire code is kind of interesting. It, there is, there's clauses in the fire code that allow wiggle room if, for alternative means and methods. So that's, that's the term they use, alternative means and methods. That's in the fire code. So that essentially means that you have to do A unless you can come up with an alternative means or method that gets you the same thing that A is getting you. Okay? So, so in this case, what, what I'm saying...
Excuse me, is A twenty feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Where, in this case, A is twenty feet.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that if, given that the topography and the slope allows for twenty feet, it's going to be twenty feet. Someone's going to have to come to me, and I'm going to have to go to the state fire marshal, for them to prove to me that they absolutely cannot do twenty feet. It's an engineering impossibility. Because the natural extension of that is you deny someone the use of their property because of a foot or a half a foot. And that's not what we try and do in the fire code. So does that make sense?
Yes. But just to clarify, the road, the easement is sixty feet wide.
Correct.
The road is approximately, most of the road is eleven feet.
Yes.
I can't get over that the Manford Engineering Company allows people to say it's fourteen feet, knowing that in their report it says eleven feet. So that, that needs to be clarified. It's not fourteen feet. The majority of it is about eleven feet.
Eleven feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Good for me?
Thank you very much. Is it possible to play the video? So, Mr. Mayor, what I've done is, since I last was here, and I didn't know I was going to speak last time, and I had to kind of think on my feet, and I have a little trouble with that sometimes. So I reviewed the video of the last meeting. At the, at the very end of the video, you recommended that the engineering company talk to the Nevada Department of Transportation and that they speak to the neighbors about what's going on. And so far, between July seventeenth and today, we've had no meeting, we've had no neighborhood meetings about this. So a part of your recommendation was not fulfilled. So I reviewed the entire video and what was the content of it. I met with Dave Rubin from the fire department, Susan Dorpansky from the planning department, Dan Roder with the engineering department to raise my concerns. I also asked our Ward Four Supervisor, Mr. Shirk, to come out to our property, drive down the driveway from our home, along with Mr. Dan Wheeler, who's, who I'm a neighbor of, and to discuss a number of things. So is it possible to play that video?
I need to, I need the link to it. Like, can you tell me what to type into the search?
It was the link I emailed it to.
I know, I don't have that access to that on this. So if you could type in the search on YouTube...
Do you, do you have a laptop? I can get my email in. So what I have here, and there's two concerns that you've asked me to address, or to the neighbors to address, the driveway. I also think, as Mrs. Tar said, there's an issue with Old Clear Creek Road is going to go on forever. So I own a number of drones with fairly high-tech camera equipment. I took the simplest drone with a GoPro camera to videotape this driveway to give you guys an idea of what's going on. I sent that email to Mr. Shirk for him to review. Okay. I got it. I got it, Steve, but, and believe me, we'll, you know, well, one, let me just say this.
say this, Old Clear Creek Road, I think that's out of the mix. I mean, because I understand that, that there's problems with Old Clear Creek Road, but you've also got a piece, a person who's got a piece of property there, who's has a right, who has...
Yes.
A recorded, now that you see it, a recorded right to get to that piece of property.
Yes.
And what's also coming out here is, and I, you've got a drone that's going to show ten or eleven feet or whatever, but there's also, there's a recorded right for a sixty-foot easement all the way from Clear Creek Road to this property. Now, somehow, and I read the letter that everybody signed and said, we're not going to grant you access. Well, I got that, and I came in here thinking, okay, you know, case closed, no access, no, no salami, or whatever they call that word. You know, but, but here, you know, there's a recorded access for public access. I mean, so, you've got to help me understand how you get around that, and what, because that's a recorded property right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, first of all, the letter is signed by three neighbors. There's many more than three neighbors. I, I didn't know the letter was being written, and...
Well, that's...
Can I finish answering?
Sure.
I, I would never have signed that letter. Mr. Schultz has the right to development. There's a sixty-foot easement. I, I have nothing wrong, you know, the, we have nothing, I personally have nothing wrong with him wanting to develop the property. So, I, I didn't sign the letter, I didn't know the letter was written, and I understand there's a sixty-foot easement, and I don't have a problem with that. I have a big problem with a, a road that is approximately eleven feet wide, quite steep, and adding twelve to fifteen cars on that road, that that is a major safety issue. I brought it up last time, and I, and I've done my homework this time by making an aerial video showing a truck, a regular average pickup truck, driving down the road, and it's now through Mr. Shirk, part of, you know, Carson City owns this video, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, well, help me, I'm, I'm trying to show the safety. We'll look, I got, I got it, but, but, but that's going to show on the ground. The condition here is going to say twenty feet or an alternative, at least twenty feet or an alternative, and you have, you're going to drive it down that sixty-foot easement. So, help me understand what the video is going to tell me, other than the exact, the eleven feet right now is, is a safety hazard.
Well, for one thing, it's awfully hard to get anybody up there to see the road, and it doesn't take very long. I've invited you and the board of supervisors and your legal counsel, and none of you would come up there. I called Mr. Shirk first after I sent him the video. He did come up. One fire person came up to my home, knocked on the door, to, to explain to me how I can improve my defensible space, not because of the road. It just happened by chance, he happened to be there, extremely much a gentleman, and I showed him the issue, then he brought it back to the fire marshal.
And that issue, Steve, I know, I'm, I'm just trying to get solidified in my own mind here. That issue is, is that the, the, the road that's on the ground now is a safety hazard.
Yes.
For use by trucks, development trucks, let's call it development trucks. What, and, but then you say you don't have any difficulty with expanding that road with an easement.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that's what, if, if this is approved, that's what's going to happen. So, unless you, unless the drone's video is going to show me that if extended to twenty feet, it's still going to be a health, a health and safety hazard, I don't know what I'm going to get out of it, but I'd be happy to look at it, but you have to help me understand that.
No, it will not change anything. It's, it's, it's trying to make the point that there is a safety issue. Some of the neighbors don't want the road for different reasons, and they, and I understand that, but if you're going to approve the development, the twenty-foot wide road's got to go in, and I'm still, because I'm still sort of in a verbal collage right now, I, I, I don't get this thing with the fire marshal, I'm sorry, I, I just don't have the mental capacity to understand that. If it's going to be twenty feet, there's got to be a big reason why it's going to be anything less than twenty feet. That, that's the point I'm making.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
Just for a minute. Steve, when we met, and you correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that you're in favor of the twenty-foot road.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
From, if they could put that blue picture back up, you're all in favor of that. That's not the issue with you, is that correct? Am I...
I have no problem with Mr. Schultz developing the property, but I do have two issues, and the two issues are the driveway and Old Clear Creek Road.
Okay, but let's, let's do the blue road. If we widen that to twenty feet, you're not opposed to that, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
I'm strongly in favor of that.
Okay, so now, the issue is really the main road, Old Clear Creek Road. That's where your issue lies, is it not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, can I, can I make a correction, Susan, or to the engineering department?
Is there a laser I could point with? Okay, if I'm, I live here, am I, is that correct? A four? You wouldn't know it, but, okay, okay. Right here, yeah, there's a fence that goes up to Highway fifty, and that's Mr. Schultz's property line. And if you have the Manford map to show, or, you know, the big parcel map, I'm just, just for the record, this road, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got, I am confused. Okay, this is the access road, and just for, since I'm up here, this is about the area, if I'm not mistaken, where the easement will be into the Schultz, I'm sorry, I thought that this was the easement road, never mind, take it back, sorry for wasting your time.
And then, Steve, I think, I think the big issue is Old Clear Creek Road for you. Is that, am I on track?
Yes, and I have new information that I think is very important to the board of supervisors. If you don't want to bring it up today, it should be brought up at another time, it's a major legal issue.
All right, and if I may just interject, and when we talked, what I said was, that road in particular, and planning can help me, is really not under our domain for sake of argument, or under our control, or is it, is it a roadway that Carson City has legal rights to, or overriding, or however you want to put that?
The formal stance, and I believe this has been done by DA's office and multiple researches with multiple members of the public that have come in, and the direction I've been given is that in nineteen fifty-seven, that alignment of the old highway, Old Clear Creek Road, was abandoned and given back to the property owners, and Carson City has no interest in any right-of-way nor maintenance beyond just west of Costco by these storage units.
And that's what I kind of alluded to when we, we discussed it, I said, we really don't have control over that, or, or have the ability to formulate ideas, put forward a plan for that. So, I think that's the big hurdle here, just to clarify for the other members, I think that's, we're on track with that. And I know you're going to talk about Old Clear Creek Road, but I think, like I said, when I met with you, it's a big obstacle. I don't know how you're going to overcome that when it's not under Carson City's...
Right.
Jim, can I just add something to that? The city manager is going to meet with Douglas County next week on exactly this, so if that is of any comfort.
And, and I alluded to that as well when we met, that, that the two counties are meeting.
Mr. Mayor, would, if there's other neighbors who want to speak about the driveway, I think they, they should do that, but am I going to have the option of talking about Clear Creek Road, or...
You know, I say, I, you know, one, I'm only one vote here, but I think that, you know, what you just heard is, you know, Clear Creek Road, as far as this, up or down on this thing, on this tentative map approval, is not at play, okay? Not at play.
Okay, I, I, I would just say that, in a conversation that one of our neighbors had on Tuesday with Mr. Shirk, so I'd like to make it a public record, Mr. Wheeler told you in front of me that sometime in the mid nineteen nineties, the Department of Public Works from Carson City came up to the abandoned road and did some improvement to that road. So, there's a saying, if you don't own it, don't touch it. If the, if the Carson City touched it, do they own it? And this becomes a major point of litigation, and, and I could tell you, on your face pa, not your face page, on your website, on the top of Carson City Board of Supervisors, Public Safety, this is a road built by taxpayer dollars, maintained by taxpayer dollars, abandoned, multiple meetings with neighbors about recognizing that it's a hazard, and trying to get something done. An effort was a good-hearted effort by government employees were made to get something done. It didn't work. No effort has been made in approximately eight years, and now you have this little thing going on where somebody probably from, well, from Carson City, with probably very good intent, came up and touched that road. Now, the question is, do they own it?
And, you made some good valid points, as I told you, and as I said, long before my time, but hopefully, as I said, the city managers above Douglas and Carson were going to get together and look at this, and formulate an idea and plan to, in the future, do something for that road. So, that is in the works, that's all.
What I'm asking for is, and then I'll sit down, because it gets awfully long-winded here, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what, and, and I do think that, again, the, the video that I made of Old Clear Creek Road is so eye-opening with piles of sand coming out onto the road after this rainstorm, which was approximately three or four days after the fire, I don't remember the exact date, and I have on video county maintained road, full of sand and a hazard, and I drove my son's pickup truck that has a special suspension to allow the wheel to come up higher, and you ought to see the truck go like that. So, if, if a modified truck has trouble with that, what is a regular car or something? And what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, that video is an eye-opener. I think it's worth doing here, and, and what I'm asking for, as I did before, Mr. Mayor, then I'll sit down, is I do believe that there is a moral responsibility from the Schultz development to do some road repair, minimal, but to at least make it safe. You can have property development, you can make good profit, lots of companies do it, the United States is based on that in large part, but it can be done with safety. And I think that, you know, you just can't ignore that, and that's my point. And now that there's this new conversation that I think other neighbors know about, of Carson City coming up and paving that road after it was abandoned, that is a major liability issue for you. And so, and that road is so bad, so I'll leave it up to you if you want to watch the video, it sounds like you're not going to do it, but my recommendation, recommendation is you do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, you know...
You should be brought back when it's on each other.
Right.
Yeah, bring her back. I mean, I may not have driven that road recently here, but I tell you what, I've jogged it for the last few years, so go, come on, Lee.
One other quick thing, I'm sorry.
We got John's got some questions here, too.
Yeah, sorry. You can't bring this back before the board over, over that roadway, and, and I would say the video was quite good. I mean, the city should look at having your drones for...
We don't need it, come on, we...
No, for damage to the roadways and everything else. I thought it was fantastic.
Before you start, ma'am, could I just, Darren, can you put this on the September or the October RTC agenda, the Clear Creek Road? Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dixie Bush, and I live at the top of Old Clear Creek Road.
Hi, Dixie, good to see you.
Nice to see you, Bob. Just a little information, having spent seventeen years working on the road with both Carson City and Douglas County, trying to get someone to take care of it, the last time it was fixed, it was Douglas County who came up to do the work. I understand that Carson was going to reimburse them for their portion of it, because it goes through both counties, as you well may know. I don't know whether that was ever accomplished or not, because I didn't follow up on it. In nineteen fifty-seven, when they built the new Highway fifty, the state abandoned Clear Creek Road, as you know. They did not return it to the landowners at that time. They returned it to the counties. The counties then had no interest in the road. So, at a point in time, with more and more people building up there, it was Doc Schultz, actually, who went down to Carson City and said, I know that you, said that you abandoned the road, and this is in meetings with both counties, it's on record, but he said, you never put it in writing, and I want it in writing. And at some point in time, he received the writing on that, claiming that Carson City had abandoned Clear Creek Road. Douglas County, I understand, has never technically put it in writing, but it is on record from a number of meetings with them, with the board of supervisors down, commissioners, rather, down there. This, just to give you a little background on the road, so when this happened, it was released back then to the property owners. So, technically speaking, it's a private road, any way you look at it. Safety-wise, perhaps, Carson City and Douglas County both have a requirement to do some help to keep it safe, and to make it access-ready for fire department, police department, who, by the way, did a fantastic job with this last fire. Anything else I can answer for you from seventeen years of research, I'll be happy to do so.
Dixie, you've been around, been around a while.
Yes.
Yeah, and, I think, I think that clarifies, I think, you know, just to kind of recap where you are, I think that's some good history, is that, you know, we've had, we've had the district attorney's office look at it a couple of times to find out who owns that road, what happened, all of the stuff here. By the way, I was going to say, you know, you and I have known each other for a long time. When all that was happening, one of my summer jobs was going to be on the survey crew for the new highway going up, that's how old I am, the four-way highway.
Aha.
That's how old I am, all right?
Well, you're not kind of catching up with me yet, but that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the, you know, so we have the DA's opinion on, you know, the legal opinion, and then, I know when I was in the Regional Transportation Commission, we had an emissary go up and try and get all the homeowners, the tribes, the counties, all together, and I think we even had Congressman Amadee come in, and I know that the treasurer wanted to get an interlocal agreement passed and, and didn't get that done, because they said we already had that right. You know, and what I remember is, it came back to the RTC saying, you know, the homeowners didn't want to play, because they don't feel it's their obligation to do anything with that road, it's somebody else's. And so, it kind of got stopped there, but here's where I think it's going, what Supervisor McKenna, who's the chair of RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, he's asked to have that put back on, the, the, Old Clear Creek Road, put back on Regional Transportation Commission's agenda to take a look at that again, and see, you know, what, what, if anything, can be done, because it is, it's an issue. I mean, there's no doubt about it, it's a big issue, and it, I don't want to say it's a conundrum, but it's a lot of different moving parts to it.
Yeah, I know there is. The road itself is rough, let's put it that way. I happen to be at the top of the canyon, so I use the golf club drive, Highway fifty, but I deliberately drove down Clear Creek yesterday to check it out, and there's bumps, and there's, you know, broken sides and things like that, but it's not that severe. It has been much worse in the past, okay? The landowners have done repair work on it, they've gone in and patched holes, and they fixed the sides. One of the gentlemen who lives there is in the asphalt business, so it was helpful, and he could help us out pricewise. So, there has been some work done, as far as maintenance is concerned, but it's an old road, and, you know, it does need help. There's no two ways about it.
Well, I think, you know, it's, if, if anything, I don't know how it's going to come out, but if, if we look for silver linings, hopefully, you know, we're going to shine a light on this and put some minds to it, and see if we can get something done on, on Old Clear Creek Road, okay? And I appreciate your comments, Dixie, very much, I mean, and thanks for being such a great member of our community.
Thank you.
John.
I, I would like anyone who has anything of interest to send to the Regional Transportation Committee, Mr. Schultz can give you the address.
That's Darren Schultz, he's a...
The thing is, is I've been getting comments from people that live out on Clear Creek and other places in Carson City, where property was developed outside of the normal, whatever you want to call it, subdivision rules, where streets weren't built, where amenities were not created, et cetera. And now, suddenly, people are now moving into them, and they want all the city amenities. I will tell you that we are short transportation money to maintain what we have. However, I do believe that we need to fix the responsibility for this once and for all, and I think the Regional Transportation Commission is the place to do it, because that's the place that declared last time Carson City didn't own it. Carson City, Douglas County, and the Washoe Tribe, and the people that live out there are all vying for it. The other thing that we need to look at is, what do we do with that road? Now that there is access to the freeway, which there wasn't when it was declared not Carson City's, maybe there's a need to change that whole area and to open that road up for... for, as a street. I don't know. So, once this discussion starts, I don't know that anyone is going to come out of it happy, but I think we need to consider the whole thing from, from basically Costco to the freeway access and see where it goes. Should be an interesting discussion.
Come on up, come on. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak, but we're going to take a break right after this, and then we'll come right back.
Legally, Margaret Harris, I answer to PEG.
Hi.
Yeah. I have quite a few friends who live in Tahoe and who have commuting, have been commuting down Old Clear Creek Road to Costco's. It's faster, and one man said, "I didn't know that such a quaint little road existed." And I thought, oh, dear. But I have so many questions that it's hard to keep them all straight. And Dixie is fantastic, and the Fire Department was absolutely fantastic during that fire when we all had to evacuate. There were three huge rigs in my drive, which is 14 feet wide. And they were happy with the roads, driveways, they called them, and actually, that's what they are, drives to people's homes and not necessarily roads, they're not constructed as roads, it would be according to the city demands. So, there's that. And is there a difference between a road and a driveway?
Between a what and driveway?
Is there a difference between the terms?
I mean, I think, you know, you're right to be concerned about terms because in, at least in the Carson City Development Code, there's a very defined term about what a road is and what the standards it has to be built to. Driveways, I'm not certain, but there's a difference.
Okay, and essentially, those paved gravel roads, what they were, when we built, they were all gravel. And the road that I have a chain across, a friend carved private, the piece of wood that's in the middle, because for a while, there was access to Highway 50 past the Cotays. And so, I had people coming underneath my bedroom window and then realizing that there was a very lackluster barbed wire fence facing them. And then, they curse and swear and, you know, turn around with gusto and roar back down. And so, a friend carved this thing, and I put the chain across, and it's gravel to my shed in the back. So, it is very confusing. The firemen who came up, as I say, there were three huge rigs in my drive, and they were happy with all the drives, driveways, in the group of houses in which I live. But they did quarrel about Old Clear Creek Road as well, from their purposes. And they were manning both sides of that road, they were solid, it was amazing production. There was one group from Montana, and all very well-spoken and very helpful. So, they deserve all kinds of kudos for what they did during that fire. But the Manhard construction people came up to my home, we had a small group of neighbors, and Chris, is it, Chris?
He's behind you there.
Yeah, he said that those properties may never have houses on them at one point. He said, you know, "It's conceivable that nothing will ever be built on the Schultz subdivision." So, and there's places in there, large sections, that they have themselves shaded in brown, not buildable. So, it's hard to know what we really are discussing.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
I understand. It's wonderful to have an articulate person as yourself come tell us that, too, that we need to be, that it's difficult to know what we're discussing. But I think I understand what you're saying, so.
I hope you do.
I do.
I understand what you're saying.
I got it, I got it.
But, there's one other point, it's gone. But aren't we lucky to have Dixie?
We are lucky to have Dixie.
Yes.
If there's nothing else, between you and Dixie, we're lucky to have both of you, but...
Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, I know, the letter was written on the advice of an attorney in town.
I got him on the letterhead here.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, come on. Anybody else for a first time? Maybe, I'd like, I'd like to take a break if we could, and we'll come back.
We'll not take long.
Okay, good.
My name is Jim Tarr.
Hi, Jim.
I am related to Sandra Tarr, by marriage, not by mother and father. I just want to clarify two or three points that have been made. Number one, I was the one that wrote that letter stating that there are more, that there's more than one way up to that property. And I'm going to give you a little evidence of that, if I may. And certainly, my wife pointed out that there's a paved road over Fredlands. And at the Planning Commission meeting, I indicated that. In fact, in the letter that I wrote, the third point indicated that there are several ways, and as near as I can tell, no one has ever investigated any of them. Mr. Baker, who I'm sure is very, very busy, apparently misplaced that thought and said that, "Oh, that was NDOT up there, and they have some secret way to get in," or something like that. Well, it wasn't NDOT. It was a company called Resource Concepts, Inc., and they were doing the percolation tests. Now, I don't know whether the consulting firm hired them or not, I would kind of guess maybe they did. But they were up there, they were up there with large equipment, they were up there for several days. According to the percolation documents, they were all over that property, they had pickup trucks up there and large equipment. It all went up there some way, not past our house or up through our properties at all. So, there's another way, and they knew that. And it's never been investigated, as far as I know. We've never heard anybody say, "Oh, well, we've looked to go up through there, we've looked to go up the road that's farther to the west, we've looked at other areas," because every one of those areas, of course, has an emergency exit. So, I would respectively, respectfully submit that this cannot be voted on until they've completed the job. All right? The second point, and somebody mentioned this, I want to emphasize it. You, I think, Mr. Mayor, mentioned at the last meeting that you wanted the Schultz people and the homeowners to get together and come up with some sort of a combined maintenance agreement. That has not happened. We were never contacted, we were never called, so, and it seems like suddenly, it's in the report saying that, "Oh, well, best efforts." You know, I know what best efforts are. Best efforts are what the golf course said they were going to do to keep trucks off of Clear Creek. It was a freeway of trucks. So, that's what best efforts is to me. I think it needs to be more than that. I think those maintenance agreements need to be connected before you approve this temporary, this temporary property. All right? So, and I think that's about all I have because I could see everybody's getting antsy in their, in their seat to, to do, to do this. So, thank you very much.
No, I don't know what to antsy to do, I just antsy probably for other reasons that don't need to be put on the record.
Well, no, I under, I'm old, I'm old, too. And so, I understand that concept very, very well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll be in recess for about 10 minutes here, then we're going to see if we can wrap this up one way or the other. Thanks, we're in recess.